If one does go off, we evacuate by the main staircases if we have to, and move across the road outside the back. And I'm also told proceedings are being filmed, so if my parking slips and someone comes, I can stay be damned. Are there any apologies?
I've got apologies, Mr Mayor, from councillor Dee Harvey and councillor Dee Copley.
Any other apologies?
Mr Mayor, I think councillor Aldington's apologies to councillor Lloyd, Ian Lloyd, will be taken.
Yeah, you're right.
Sorry, Mr Mayor, he was upon the...
Any other apologies? Declaration of interest?
I'm sure I'm going to get it.
Member Warwick Shekane, first.
My association with your government has been a negative director.
Need to say here last week, obviously. Thank you, Jim.
Warwick, yes, yes.
Warwick Shekane. And one more, Warwick Shekane, councillor.
Warwick Shekane, councillor.
Just got the full set, Warwick Shekane, councillor. No other declares of interest, declaration, there are none. Then, this is an extraordinary meeting of the council, it should be called by a council requisition, stood council procedures, rules 431D, Department of Council's constitution. Now I ask councillor Watson as the first signatory to move the motion.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Before moving the motion, I would like to seek council's agreement to alter words of the motion slightly following your advice. This has been said relative to all members and to their paid service before that. So I'm seeking council's approval of that before moving the motion.
Thank you, councillor Watson. It isn't clear whether the altered motion should be seconded before the council signifies its agreement or otherwise. Taking a strict interpretation, I suggest that the council signifies its consent before the motion is seconded. Are we content to have this change of order? Is there news? We have a show of hands there, please. Thank you, councillor. Is there anyone against? Nonsense, Lord.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, the motion for us tonight has been designed with one aim in mind, to give formulation of this Borough Plan and future local plans, the openness, transparency and legitimacy that they need in order to command the confidence of the residents of Monet and Bedworth. Without legitimacy and confidence, we are creating a divide between us as local politicians and the residents whom we are elected to serve. At the moment, local plans are put together during the cabinet at the time. The make-up of the cabinet, the openness of the committee, sorry, the make-up of the committee, the openness of the committee and the purpose of the committee are all entirely made up at the pleasure of the cabinet. It can be revoked just as easily as it is created. We are always going to be required to have a local plan, so let us create a committee whose purpose and make-up of their existence is clearly defined in our constitution as part of the government's arrangements. Confidence in the current Borough Plan, Mr Mayor, is virtually non-existent. Residents across Monet and Bedworth are angry, concerned and in some cases furious about the development of the Borough Plan to date, where the vast majority of developments is being proposed in Monet, although Bedworth is taking a significant, although minority, shape. Let us look at the support that the current plan has across the areas affected in Monet by the proposals. Atalborough, only thirty-eight per cent voted Labour. Arbury, only thirty-five per cent voted Labour. Whitestone, only twenty-one per cent voted Labour. St Nicholas, only fifteen per cent voted Labour. And in Wellington, only twelve point five per cent voted Labour. And because of the absence of a Borough Plan, other areas are under threat. Galley Common is now under threat and thirty-five per cent are voted there, voted Labour. Indeed, across the Borough, Labour only managed to get forty-one per cent of the vote, hardly a resounding vote.
Point of apology, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, I understood that the councillors should speak to the altered motion. I don't know what he's saying has to do with the altered motion.
Well, if councillor Jackson there doesn't even let me finish my opening of a proposal, she will get the gist of what I'm saying. Perhaps she just don't like the bare facts. And it's hardly a resounding endorsement of the present Borough Plan. Only by the quirks of our electoral system is Labour in the position they are now, and in time that will change. Whilst political winds come and go, the Borough Plan will change the make-up of our Borough for decades, and so will the next local plan and the one after that. We should have a system that is fit for purpose, and at the moment it quite clearly is not. It is the residents whom we serve that will have to live with the consequences of decisions we as a council make. So we should have a system as robust and inclusive as possible with the very people that will be affected. Why are Labour so afraid of the public being able to come to a formal committee of this council and contributing to the development of our Borough Plan? Why are Labour so afraid of having minutes of the recommendations that are made for the Borough Plan? And why, to put it bluntly, are Labour so afraid of scrutiny on this issue? I believe the key word is accountability. As councillors, we should be prepared to stand up and accept responsibility for the decisions and recommendations that we make. It is only the last possible minute that this present administration does so, and we saw that recently with the report for the Borough Plan Working Party being handed to the cabinet at the end of only four hours before the meeting started, despite the instructions being given to officers the previous week to bring it to cabinet. It is a shameful way to run a democratic council. Labour set so much store about this council being one of the most open and transparent with regards to having less members speaking at meetings of this council. Prove it. If you have nothing to hide, you have nothing to be frightened of by accepting the principle of this motion. Be more open, be more transparent and be more democratic. Vote to set up a formal, proper committee to decide the future of our Borough generations. Mr Mayor, I certainly move the motion as an ending agreement.
Thank you. And is there a second there of the list for signatures?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'll second the motion and reserve my votes until later.
Thank you. I remind members that this matter is for discussion and the normal rules of debate will apply, set out in the council procedure rule thirteen. Does any member wish to speak? No? Nonsense, Foster.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I don't think that's a sad too much. Since the proposal on the table today is one of the aim of greater deflation at the earliest possible time along the needed path of the Borough, I would hope that it would be willingly supported by the members of this council. In the Sustainable Communities Plan, which we released, which I have a copy of, that... We've all seen this, but not in fact within the Borough, and I read it, is that Monet and Bedworth covers thirty and a half square miles, the majority of which is open space or countryside. Why then, oh why, do I have to feel the way I do about what is happening to my area and most of the other residents of the Borough have the same feeling? We should leave ourselves plenty of time to plan things properly. Why must we add damaging headlines, which is in today's upper paper, and I wrote it, still no new land for noble ground? There's no excuse for this, Dan. We had an area which was unfortunately near the river, and then later found that the water table was rather higher than it should have been. We should add several areas in hand at much higher places where the water table is, it's quite low here. We can work together quite well. Only last night's planning meeting, planning application meeting...
Councillor, can you speak to the motion, please?
Well, this is...
We're not talking about very underground, we're talking about the plan.
Okay, this is the plan. In the planning application committee meeting last night, I seconded the proposal made by a Labour member. In the second item on the agenda, my own proposal was seconded by the chair, quite rightly so, when the thing was having its base in the council by conclusion. We very often now did that. Just to finish on it, I'll point out, I will basically finish on that. This afternoon, I went to a funeral of a member who I only met two years ago and has given me a lot of stick over the last... He's wronged me twice with an hourly average plan. I, as you all well know, the technical issues I brought up about the problems in my area and in fact the whole Borough, it isn't just in St Nicholas, of traffic causing air pollution, where we already exceed those limits. We are already...
Same again, councillor.
We can work together to make sure these things don't happen.
The residents, it happened.
Today, and did go from the very things that I mentioned last night, leading to the heart of that. We should be trying to help our residents so that unfortunate things like this... Should that miss the shot, we will have one day on the board, yes, maybe a little bit of that. So, I believe it is that, I think there should be some consideration here today. So I say no problem with you accepting this motion. I want you to do that, Mr Mayor.
Councillor? Councillor Jackson, you may leave.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm going to speak to the motion as brought by councillor Hinton this evening. I know to councillor Watson that we want a standing committee appointed by the leaders of the council. That's your motion. You want it to consist of eight members. The decision of cabinet, when it met in July, was that a working party of eight members be constituted. I see no difference. You wanted there to be six Labour members. That's exactly the decision of cabinet in July. You want there to be one member from each of the alternative opposition groups. That is exactly the cabinet minute of the meeting in July. No difference whatsoever. Both a working party or a committee would report to cabinet as the executive function of the council. And from there, the cabinet would bring a report to council. No difference between a committee or a working party. We called this meeting when a lot of residents in the Borough would be on annual leave, taking time off in August, for what purpose? And it seems to me the merits are minor. The cost of constituting this evening's meeting is around five hundred pounds, I understand. So we called a meeting at that cost to have a group of eight members meet, as was agreed at cabinet, six Labour members, as agreed at cabinet, one member from the Conservative opposition group, as agreed at cabinet, and one member from the Alternative group, formed to provide effective opposition to the unfair Borough Plan, as agreed at cabinet. I think the existing cabinet decision, I was not there at that meeting, I was on annual leave, seems to me sensible. I fail to understand why it is necessary that council taxpayers expect us to hold this meeting and potentially delay the progress of an important policy of this council. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Turner, you're up, you're in the chair.
I'm surprised that we're here, as the leader has said quite clearly. When you called him, you got him wrong, because there's no legal standing. You'd like to work it all round the listeners to get this meeting even off the ground. You've totally another waste of money. As has been pointed out, it is up eight and six and one one. Actually, we don't have to, the committee set up and the system is legally, we don't have to have any of you on the committee. We don't have to have anywhere near it, we can operate. From the committee, the planning committee, subcommittee, that are here. This party, this story, doesn't do them trick. We open it up to everybody. We give you the opportunity to come on. What did you do at the last working party? What did you Tories do? You walked away, you were so frightened of getting elected, of votes, that you were not brave enough to stand up and put forward the plans that we put forward to the people to let them talk on the Borough Plan. You used it as a political football. You were frightened to come out, you wouldn't sit on it. And lo and behold, what have we have at last cabinet? Mr Mayor, we're being threatened from the leader over there, that if we don't do this, they don't do that, we ain't going to sit on it, I'm not going to sit on the committee. That's what he told us. If we don't do it, he's not going to sit on it. If we don't play his ball game. He's been trying out that, we've got, by the way, your partner over there, he's accepted to sit on the committee that cabinet has settled. Count Conde Door has accepted. He's actually suggested us, like, tonight, I should imagine, he'll be voting with us on the way we vote, because he's already agreed to sit with us and accept the setup of we've done. He's actually asked me today, today if I will tell him at the first meeting, the subcommittee sits down. And so he can book his holiday, so I can tell him that. I can't move that, of course, it's called this meeting. Of course, it's called this meeting, we're telling him.
It just... Go on, then, I'm not going to... When you mind standing?
How does, how the Green Party voting got anything to do with this motion? So, you'll need to stick to the topic tonight, and I appreciate it, councillor.
If you could explain that to somebody at college, you might help.
Councillor Lloyd.
Oh, my God. Then who, councillor? You've got to understand everybody, you've got to learn what it's all about. We have just, you have been hyping tonight, and I do respect the mayor and that chair, so I do. I think you've got away with murder tonight, because you've diverted away from the actual issue that you're in for after tonight. We've been lecturing on the number. Actually, if all of you two were standing, you'd have only had that guy sitting there, because you'd have been kicked out. We're so bad in what we're doing in the Borough Plan. Where is that? Look at all those empty seats. Look at all the empty seats. Where are they? Where's your leader gone? He lectures us on the figures of what Labour is. We even get lectured that we can't bury somebody down the road because we're next to the water. And we've got a councillor standing at me. Freedom, that's democracy, we love that thing, free democracy, that's what we do. And Count Conde Door asked us today, I can't give a day we're going to follow the first meeting, councillor, because of this meeting. You, part of the calling of the meeting, if you hadn't, we could have had the acceptance and the Tories would have accepted to sit on the committee. We'd have called the meeting, we'd have got up, we could have got in the first meeting, have been told and you could have gone off holiday. You've got to put your substitute in if you want there. That's the other thing you asked, you can have your substitute, doesn't want to, you're going. I mean, and the committee had have been up and running. You've complained to us about time, getting it in. We've got to add to the public. This is, again, you ain't got a clue on me really what happened. We've been adding to the public without plans. The public have added, they put it together and they've sent all their views back in. What do you think we do with them? Do we just shook them to some, you moan it, but we shook them to a side, do we just ignore them? Of course we don't. Our officers have to go through everyone that comes into this council, and that's what they've been doing. They have to go and have a look at every area that the public have put into us to make sure it is viable, where they can build houses, an industry, up schools and that, so we can move the front forward. They have to be inspected and make sure we can do it. Then we're going to bring some, the working party guests up, we will bring some issues to you to make the decision. You won't be there if you don't want to come, like you did last one. I'm just sending them away. We did it this way, boy. I'll tell you, because I don't like your policy, one little bit, and you think you do because we... Well, what we do, we listen, and what we do, we lecture, we want it, you can moan it. I've got your MP, by the way, he ain't got a clue, he's got this complaining at you, he's complaining... Don't bother, he's complaining you for calling this meeting.
You've had this three minutes. That's a point of order.
Sorry?
That's a point of order, sorry.
No, well, don't bother, it's your MP, he's calling you, criticizing you, criticizing you for calling this meeting.
You've had it three minutes, man.
Sorry, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Hancock.
I'm saying shit. You're looking.
Mr Mayor, in almost twenty-five years on this council, I have never saw the performance that we've had tonight. Some of the accusations that are being made are absolutely disgraceful, Mr Mayor. We have the leader of the group, opposite, accusing us, he didn't use the word, but accusing us of gerrymandering the local plan to suit our needs. We haven't done that, we won't do it, we'll do it in a democratic way. We did, because all the figures, everything's going in Monet and according to it. Perhaps he hasn't been over there to see what they have there.
Point of personal explanation?
Mr Mayor, we all, there's no such thing.
There is a point of personal explanation. Okay, got it. Harry Hutton.
Mr Mayor, his colleague that sits next to him accuses us of causing people's deaths. He's been to a funeral and he said it, the man had died of the things that are being caused by our developments. It's absolutely disgraceful, it's not true, and it's a disgrace to say, and they should publicly apologize for it, Chair. All they do is be parochial. We've always worked as one council. Imagine some of the things I've had to fight against in Bedworth, about what people in Bedworth used to think about the need to get anything. Well, I've always worked on the theory, we are one Borough. But these now are parochial. Everything they talk about is the bits that happen in their own patches, it was said by themselves. And I've got to say, Mr Mayor, regardless, well, regardless is the wrong word. If there's any delay in the local plan, it doesn't affect the way a planning applications committee makes its decisions. It has done and will always make decisions based on the merits of the application. In fact, it just shows, as councillor Lloyd has pointed out, yet the MP, the local MP, is lack of knowledge. And if they knew their own areas, they would know for some of the reasons why we refuse some applications. It's our local knowledge as local councillors. Their government makes a presumption in favour of development. They introduce localism that means nothing. It's taken away more say by local people. And, you know, any delay is down to them. It's because of that, Mr Mayor. So, in regard to the local plan, democracy will take its course. It was interesting, wasn't it, councillor Foster said, we should allow plenty of time. But at the same time, he wants us to speed things up. So, democracy will take its course so that we can get things right. And I'll finish, Mr Mayor, by saying, I really do think they should apologize for what's been said tonight, and also for them exercising their democratic rights that has resulted in this cost to the council, well, not to the council, but to the people that live in this Borough and have got to pay their council tax too long. There was no need for this, they know it could have gone ahead, it was already bringing forward, yet I called this meeting up. If we had have accepted this pretty bait tonight, there would have been another meeting. How many meetings are they going to call at the expense of the council taxpayer? Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Watson, you wanted a rose light prize.
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. Councillor Hancock is, as usual, quite the saint, because if he actually cleaned his ears out once in a while, he would have heard that he mentioned... But he won't, that's fair play, Mr Mayor, so that's fair play.
Mr Mayor, I haven't made personal insults to the councillor opposite. No need to answer all that. This is a way of ending possible issues I've got around my hearing.
Well, obviously, he didn't hear the bit about my moving of the motion out there, Mr Mayor.
Pardon?
Good one. Obviously, he has selected him when it comes to the opposition, so he doesn't want to hear the proper debate.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I was a bit interested tonight in some of the comments from opposite, particularly about the very minor differences that we were told are, that exist between the Borough Working Party and the committee, I'm talking about setting them. If they're so minor, what are the objections? I think the real reason for the objections is that the group opposite know the committee isn't a minor difference, it's a very significant difference. It's a difference that means there will be transparency and openness. And they are apparently, in your view, very minor things. Well, I don't think they're minor at all, and I don't think residents think those issues are minor either. And as far as any costs incurred in calling this meeting tonight, which will hopefully change our constitution and our value going forward for years, five hundred pounds, if that is the cost of tonight's meeting, compared to that hundreds of thousands of pounds that we have incurred as a council because the council's lost planning appeals, do you start having a Borough Plan? So, let's get back to the real reason we're here tonight, and it is a very simple reason. There are unreason...
Mr Mayor, cannot point a verification on this, on this...
Let me make it absolutely clear. This Borough Plan and this meeting absolutely do nothing to do with appeals on the committee at all. The, we have, the appeals have gone through the committee in a fight, so do not link, do not link any appeal towards the Borough Plan or this meeting. I have figures and facts from the inspectors, let me read the one paragraph here and then a beginning. Inspector, this is an unreasonable, not based on lack of Borough Plan, on every appeal that we've gone through, what we've done at the appeal meeting.
Sorry, thank you. So, you know, back to the real reason we're here, which is the unreasonable delay in bringing forward a Borough Plan. It's as simple as that. After four years, none of the members opposite can predict a fight that Labour are bringing forward.
Obviously, the councillor opposite was not listening. None of the appeals, like, that went forward with loss due to a lack of a Borough Plan. Your assumption that not having a local plan...
I'm saying you don't want personal application, Mr Mayor.
Your assumption that not having a local plan has cost hundreds of thousands of pounds in reference to the appeals is wrong.
Thank you, your left, mate.
I feel it will fall on deaf ears, so, you know, it's not worth bothering, I'll just carry on if I can, Mr Mayor, and get this finished. After four years, you can't currently claim to be bringing forward the plan as quickly as possible. We only have to look at the inactivity over the last year and the significant underspend in bringing forward the Borough Plan that was reported to council recently. You know, it's obvious, it's just a lame tactics on the part of the group opposite who just want to have development by stealth, particularly in areas, green belt areas, Scotland areas. You know, they've mentioned about Monet and St Nicholas, the ward that I stand for. Well, that's a case in point. You know, it would have been unthinkable for there to be thousands of houses approved for development there. The infrastructure just can't take it. And why would you select green belt and countryside? I mean, it just seems unreasonable. So, I think at the end of the day, we just want to bring forward a Borough... So, I think at the end of the day, we just want to bring forward a Borough Plan as soon as possible. And the way to do that is to have public scrutiny. Whatever members of the opposition say about the working party, and it isn't broken, it clearly is, it doesn't work the current system. Four years with no sign of an end coming up means that we've got to change something. If we have a properly constituted committee, where members of the public can come and observe, they can speak at it, and there's properly public minutes, that's transparency, that's openness, that will ensure that the process is moved forward on a timely basis, or everybody will be able to see why it hasn't been. And that's the important part. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Is there any other members this day? Councillor.
The leader has said that committees are open to the public. Any member of the public can come to a committee. In order to do what the leader, your leader, wants, we've got to change the constitution. And there has to be a committee set up to change the constitution. That's the only way you'll get it. And it's absolutely ridiculous. He keeps saying about the green belt. What did Mr. Pitts say? Building the green belt. Yeah. He's a good chap for us, you know.
Councillor Donald, you've preserved the right to speak.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and I won't engage in any of the arguments at all. I think we need to move forward. A very important part of environmental law is the AHARs Convention. It talks about how we do public involvement in things like local planning. A key part of it is the whole public should be involved in shaping their environment. And by that may mean, for our case, in Eton and Bedworth. Part of that is obviously them putting in answers to consultations. But it has been a meaningful process. And I think it's very important that when we discuss the Borough Plan after all these responses, we do that as much as possible in public. This motion realizes that we have to do a few things in private, because obviously landowners can have advantages if they know certain details. But the majority of the stuff we can do in public. The provision of doctor surgeries, cycle lanes, bus stations, all sorts of things we need to do. Planning policies about war homes. There is so much we need to discuss that can be done in public. And so much would work so much better if we had prominent meetings and only closed them off for the periods we need. I believe by passing this motion, we're not substantially wrecking the Borough Plan, we're actually making it better. We're actually enabling the Tories to come along to the meetings as well. I have lots of arguments with the Tories, because I disagree with them on lots of stuff. But that's part of the opposition. And we can have meetings in public as much as possible. We'll have proper meetings, and it won't be like the timeshare sales pitch, where you go in a room, they give you a presentation, they keep you there till you say the right thing, and then they go away. Now, I said, I'm going to the Borough Plan working groups, whatever. I was standing outside with placards when I wasn't allowed in. I want to be in the process. I know if it's a closed working group, the process will be fairly rotten. But I will check hard, because I need to see what is going on. I need to make my views felt. I'll be massively outnumbered, there'll be six of you and one of me. But I'll be there fighting for my constituents, fighting to make a better plan, and I hope some of it sticks in. This meeting costs £500. Delaying the Borough Plan each year costs about £600. £300,000 for the process, and £300,000 for all the appeals. We don't need a Borough Plan to win appeals, but we do need a five-year housing supply. And the Borough Plan will allocate where housing should go. So it is important to have a Borough Plan. If at your planning meetings you wish to reject an application, it's far easier to do it so if it's not in the Borough Plan and you've got plans for how to get a five-year housing supply. So I do hope some of you will support the two opposition groups here, and actually go for an open process. It will actually make things better in the long run. Because if it was a closed process, it makes things more bitter and more confrontational afterwards, and it reduces the chance of us getting a plan. We're more likely to get a plan quickly if all the parties attend and we can actually have the own conversations. So I would like to move forward with this motion, have a properly constituted committee, and move forward, stop wasting the taxpayers' money. Thank you.
Sorry about that. The second has now spoken. Councillor Wilson, do you want to? Bring it to.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Councillor Jackson was at great pains to go through the similarities between what the Cabinet set up a couple of weeks ago and what this motion intends to do. Leader of the council, check. Any members, check. Recommendations to Cabinet, check. Then we come to the major differences. Formal agendas, Labour, no, this motion, yes. Formal minutes, Labour, no. This committee has through this motion, yes. In public, Labour, no. This motion, yes. Those are very key differences in my book, and if Labour don't think they are, then they really haven't got the hang of what a democratic and vital issue this is for the residents of the borough. The cost, they mention the cost of £500. I'll take no lectures from Labour on calling extraordinary councils, when they called one on the issue of the county borough, the county changes, which were gerrymandered by Labour and Liddent on a decision, they doubted, where Liddent had had the passing vote, who don't even have any representation in this borough. They called an additional committee, which had no power over whatsoever, and virtually achieved nothing. This is of key importance to the residents of the borough, and this is something the council can actually control. Councillor Jackson was quite right, don't have to have a committee. If she remembers listening to my opening statement, I said local plans and the committees are put together at the whim of the Cabinet. We agree on that one. The vital difference is that we believe there should be a committee, there should be a standing committee, and it should be within the constitution as a vital yardstick by which members of the public can judge us by. Councillor Lloyd, senior, talks about getting away with murder. Nothing would be further from the truth, what they've been doing is getting away with murder since the May elections. Vital secret papers being instructed by officers only to be given out at the time of the agenda being considered at this council. I had to specifically ask for those papers. Items going on Cabinet agendas four hours before the Cabinet is to consider those items. That's not open and transparent, that's getting away with murder.
There's a point of order, boy.
I do believe that the party opposite did receive those particular big papers before anyone was in here.
That, Mr. Mayor, is because I had to specifically request them. Officers were under instructions not to hand them out, and this is what the information I had from officers, until the actual council had gone into secret session, so that then they would be handed out. That is the information I was given, and those were the instructions.
Can we go back to the motion?
I am just responding. They talk about a threat, we haven't issued a threat, it's just a statement of intent, it's quite clear what we're going to do. I am not the leader of the Green Party, councillor Condecorde isn't the leader of the Conservative Party. Where we do have interests of commonality is ensuring that this process is open and democratic and transparent. You can take it as a threat, mine's just a simple statement of intent of what they're going to do. We will not give a big leak of acceptability to the opposition, sorry, to the Tory group, over this one. And they talk about being parochial. Well, perhaps they should remember the Cabinet report, which came out with the original proposed consultation. They specifically went against the recommendations of officers in where land should be designated for building on. St Nicholas and Weyton, 3,000 houses, officers hadn't even considered as being suitable. It's that lot over there which is starting to put it in, Mr. Mayor. I think there's a bit of parochialism on the other side, Mr. Mayor. If they remember my opening statement, I refer to wars which aren't even conservative. So that's not just me standing up for my war, which I'm perfectly happy to do, and that's why I'm elected to do. I'm standing up for Appleborough, for Harbury, for Whitestone, for Nicholas, for Wellington, which we all agree on is getting a dust deal, and for Galway Common. That's not being parochial, Mr. Mayor, that's taking a look across the entire borough which has been affected, and the borough which is in it. I just mentioned Bedworth, councillor Henley. Bedworth is getting a hit as well, down Hospital Lane, isn't it? So these are issues which need to be addressed.
We could have a conversation, and let the councillor continue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The key point of this motion, and at the heart of this motion, is openness, transparency, and democracy. If Labour have nothing to hide, then they should vote for it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Wilson. I will now move to the vote.
I will record it locally, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I will bring out any of each member in alphabetical order who will indicate if they are for or against the motion. Mr. Almington apologises, councillor Beaumont, against. Councillor Bennett. Councillor Bonner. For. Councillor Copton apologises, councillor Doughty. Councillor Doughty. Councillor Elliott. Councillor Foster, or councillor Fowler. Councillor Glass. Councillor Grant. Councillor Hancock, against. Councillor Harvey apologises, councillor Hawkes, against. Councillor Haynes. Councillor Hickling. Councillor Jackson. Councillor Condal. Councillor Tony Lloyd. Councillor Ian Lloyd. Councillor Longdon. Councillor Margreth. Councillor Navara. Councillor Caroline Phillips. Councillor Neil Phillips. Councillor Pomford. Councillor Jill Shepherd. Councillor Tracy Shepherd. Councillor Tandy. Councillor Taylor. Councillor Thrones, for. Councillor Watkins, against. And councillor Woodson, for.